Looks like we're streaming.
Hey, I think we're good.
All right. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening and the chance to meet and discuss Borough Business. We do thank you for answered prayers. You do hear our prayers, and we thank you for that. And we ask that you would be with our discussions tonight. May it be to the benefit of the entire borough. And we ask for the upcoming events, including the upcoming election. We pray that 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 would go well. And we ask that you continue to be with our efforts to improve this community. And thank you for your mercies to us. Be with our families. Keep us healthy and help us again as we seek to serve you in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, the pledge.
That was pretty good.
That was unusual.
Wow. We had some matter of opinion.
All right, roll call. You on there, Mrs. Hoffman?
Mr. Crouch?
Here.
Mr. Darius?
Yeah, he's here.
Mrs. Deal?
Here.
Mr. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Singovitz?
No.
Mr. Penner?
Here.
All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you. You had the meeting minutes from March 30th, 2021. The regular meeting and the April 6th, 2021 work sessions. Any questions? Any questions about those meeting minutes? All right, approval of bills, that's in your packet. Let me read down through those. All right, Coz Oil Service, $210.48, Todd Cozier, $182, Boston Mutual, $413.61, CNH Industrial Capital, $922.83, and Daco, $246.80, Irwin McKnight PC, $1,243.50, Edmund Fuels, $314.57, US Municipal Supply Company, $530.25, Timothy S. Barrett, $175.93, Oakbridge Equipment, $10.15, Sailor's Market, $159.69, Ship Awards Company, $50.88, Commissioners of Cumberland County, $157.32, PA Municipal Code Alliance, $720, U.S. Power Equipment, $164.20, JFG Funding, $269. $269. Newville Print Shop, $60. We have to mute somebody here in a second.
Strangling.
Advanced Septic Services, $143. Let me just mute everybody.
Scott, can you hear me? I can't hear anybody.
I can hear you, Jack.
You can hear me? It might be because I muted myself.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can hear you. Sorry.
It was mute for a while.
I think I muted my... I muted myself. So let me, let me go back to where we were. I think we were JFG Funding. So JFG Funding, $269, Newville Print Shop, $60, Advanced Septic Services, $143, Coak and Associates, $76.76, Higher Information Group, $78.15, Sherwin-Williams, $1,275.40, Timothy Barrett, $738.13, Crime Intervention and Alarm, $433, AB Martin Roofing and Supplies, $221.94, Watch Guard, $95, Kdig, $250, and Raybold Services, $60, for a total of $9,202.59 from General Fund. There are no highway aid bills. Any questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, moving on to the financial or the treasures report. Yeah, it's here now. So General Fund Checking, and this is all effective the end of March. So General Fund Checking, $9,915.48, Rental Fund Checking, $1,372.94, Street Lighting Account, $2,613.36, Fire Tax, $57,258.71. Under the Expense Accounts, the General Expense Account, $540.49, Newville Area Events, $5,235.11. The Highway Aid Liquid Fuels Checking, $7,364.88. Payroll Checking, $15,014.91. Pension Fund Statements, the Police Pension Plan, $367,664.93. Non-Uniform Pension, $504,257.59. The Borough Joint Veteran Council Account, $946.63. Capital Improvement Fund, $1,467.61. Tax Anticipation Loan Fund, $990.40. Any questions on those? Okay, you have the Department Head Written Reports in in your packets. We have the Police Chief Report, the Mayor Report, Zoning and Code Enforcement Officers Reports, Street Superintendent Report, Chief Plan Operators Report, and Field Operations Report. Any questions on those?
No, sir.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's a move.
The move, is it seconded?
Second.
The move is seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The extensions, motion carries. All right, down to verbal reports. The Police Chief Report. Chief.
Good evening. Monthly Report for March 2021 for the Police Department. Total calls for service for the month were 336. Traffic Enforcement for the month was 104 citations issued. Side note, on those 104 citations, 56 of those were commercial vehicle citations. Zero parking violations, 27 traffic warnings issued. Patrol Vehicle Mileage for the month, 2,952 miles. Any questions on that?
How many? What did you say was commercial citations?
104 total for the month, and 56 of those were commercial. So about half.
Okay.
Chief, is that all the tractor trailer stuff?
That is all tractor trailers.
Mostly at the red light?
Probably 98% of it, yeah.
Thanks, Todd.
There was one that I recall that that wasn't. Other than that one, I would say they all were.
Where was the one going? Where was the one going?
Where was the one going? They were speeding, doing 36 and 25.
All right, compared with last year. How does it compare with last year this time?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I know it's quite, quite different, quite higher. Especially for this past month, for the month of March. That's the month of March of 2021 was higher than, I can 100% guarantee, it's higher than any other month we've ever had. As far as turns in, as far as citations.
Thank you.
Just a couple other things to touch on. Our firearms came in about a week ago. Our holsters came in today. Still waiting ammunition. I'm not sure exactly where it is. It's been ordered. It should have been in, but hasn't. So within the next couple weeks, we should be qualifying with our new firearms. And once we do that, we'll be able to get rid of the final three that are in use, which will make up the difference in how much we got for the old ones and how much we paid for the new ones. National Night Out fundraising has started. We probably are in week two or week three of that. That's going, going well. For as far ahead as what we are. We still have another three or four months to go, and we're doing really well on that. And Fred mentioned in the financial meeting about our tasers. I think he wanted me to touch on that. He had talked to me about maybe moving some of the money that we had budgeted for radios for this year over to replacing our tasers, which I didn't feel was too bad of an idea. We had, we had budgeted $400 for this year for supplies. That really wasn't for parts. The cartridges that we use on the tasers do expire. I think they're only good for three or four years. So we have to, whether we use them or not, we have to continue to replace them, that we're not carrying expired cartridges. Batteries. We do have to check the tasers for operation periodically, and that does use up the battery, and the batteries are quite expensive. I think they're about $100 apiece. So the 400 that we had set aside for the budget was expenses for cartridges and expenses for batteries. But we had talked about the condition of the tasers. I think they are approximately six years old, about the same as what our firearms were. There are some issues with, with each and every one of the tasers that that we're carrying. Might not be a bad idea to, to rotate them out. I know we had talked about keeping that stuff on a five-year rotation, and we're past the five years. I've yet, I've not gotten a quote on that yet. I'm still waiting to hear back from them on what that might cost. I don't have anything else.
Any questions for Chief? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
All right, the financial report for the month of March is, if you've looked at it, is in line with the number of citations and the enforcement efforts during the same timeframe. Traffic fines, $2,251.18, non-traffic, 25. Code violation, 100. Clerk of Court fines, $1,264.80. And again, the clerk of courts fines are payments that are made by, to the court by defendants who we've arrested that have been convicted of criminal offenses. And $23.10 from the meters in the Borough Lot in Glebe, Glebe Avenue, for a total of $3,664.80. And I believe in addition to the truck enforcement, the, the chief had indicated to me that they picked one day and did a speed enforcement detail, which was really successful. I, I don't know the exact timing on that. We may see some of that on next month's report. Balance in the department's checking account, $11,968.76. The K9 account has been replenished and is up to $3,446.20. Usable balance on the department debit card, $316.06, and a balance of $161 on the auxiliary police account. And other than that, if no one has any questions, that, that is all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Mayor? All right, thank you. Nothing particular from LEMC. He did ask in an email later, later this afternoon about opening the office. I, I think it's, we've already opened the office, right?
The office is open. The public works and water and sewer buildings are closed. So we should consider just a general motion to notify county that all offices are open.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
I'm moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Anything else under that category? All right, so listen, Mr. McKnight?
I did get a draft together for an ordinance. It's an unusual ordinance for me. I've never been so specific about one particular issue, and that is turning from 641 onto 233. I had Matt send it over late today to Fred to send to all of you. I'm not sure he saw that or got it. But I've been trying to send it out to you individually in between breaks in the in the exciting meeting we're having. But I still probably need, did you get a few of you, unless Fred, you got, did you get it out to everybody?
I got mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have mine.
Good. Well, I knew Fred was efficient at doing that. Mayor, did you get yours?
Yes, I did.
Good, all right. So
I even read it.
Well, I'm not saying how readable it is, but, but here's, here's the concept. The concept is that we're, we already know that making turns off 641 onto 233 is not legal. So what this ordinance attempts to do is to say, all right, any driver who does this and is, is found doing it is guilty of of this ordinance, and that can make him subject to civil fines, restitution, reasonable legal fees and costs required to repair all damages created by the illegal turns. But what I'm also trying to do is saying that any commercial carrier who has a driver, any driver that does this violation is subject to also paying these things. And any driver for a commercial trucking carrier throughout their company who does this is added to the previous number of violations. So the whole goal of this is to put the fines high enough. The minimum fine for the first violation is $1,000 plus restitution attorney fees and costs. Each subsequent violation, the ordinance by an independent driver or by any subsequent driver, the same commercial motor carrier will be doubled to 2,000 with restitution attorney fees and costs. A third violation by a driver, a subsequent driver, the same motor carrier will be $4,000 with restitution attorney fees and costs. This is just a first attempt to try and get to the heart of the matter. But if companies have to start paying large numbers, we'll create a Mount Holly Springs where they avoid our town for fear of this sort of violation. That's the, at least that's what the goal is. My thought is that, take a look at this. And fines can be increased. Remember, the magistrate locally can award up to $12,000 for a civil case. And we're looking at civil fines, not criminal fines, because we want the money to come to us instead of some other part of the state or county government. So I'm sure there are questions. Sorry, couldn't get it out to you sooner. But I had to sort of psych myself up and get angry about this before I could even come up with something this specific. So any thoughts you have? But my thought would be, look at it. Well, then, if, if we want to change it, we can do it at the work session. And I could even get it advertised then for the end of the month of May.
Is this intended to, to only be used when a truck makes an illegal turn and actually damages something?
No, it's if he makes the illegal turn. And if that's not clear, I'll make it clearer.
Well, my question would be, what happens to the actual vehicle code traffic violation? Or, or my, my concern is the court may take a dim view on citing them with both. A traffic violation, and then on top of that, a vehicle or a Borough Ordinance violation for the same thing.
Mayor, wouldn't the, the vehicle code violation apply to the driver? And this, this applies to the trucking company? So wouldn't they be two separate?
I, I thought I heard Marcus explain a part of that, that it was the driver also.
Well, I'm looking at independent drivers who aren't part of a company. And I don't want, I don't want companies suddenly declaring all their drivers to be independent so that they avoid this sort of thing. So I'm trying to look for loopholes in doing it, but, but I hate the main, the main point is that citing criminally the driver isn't being, isn't effective enough to stop the issue. We have to somehow get the company in the pocket.
I, I agree with that. Just, just a question on how the police department was going to work that. And another, in, in the proposed ordinance, it's, it talks about damage being done by trucks making illegal turns. Do you think there should be something in there that designates why they're illegal turns? The fact that that area is, Pendot approved signage that prohibits them from turning there?
I could, I can add that to the, to the ordinance to make that point. But it's, that's what gets me so worked up about this, because it's so obvious the turn's illegal, and the driver still just ignore it because it's more expedient to get to make the attempt regardless of what happens to the truck and everybody else involved.
Okay, that, I have no more questions. I'm happy with the answers.
It's not, it's not necessarily just a matter of expediencing, Marcus. As, as I've mentioned previously, having been behind the wheel of the truck, if I was sitting at that light looking ahead toward the mountain and seeing that the road's going to wind up around that mountain or on a road that's even less suitable for trucks than, than this turn is, I'd probably opt to, to make the turn. Nevertheless, they, they should be, shouldn't be coming into town in the first place. So I think this will help, help accomplish that. My one concern is that it's very specific as to one turn at the intersection. And I've seen trucks coming west on 233 or, or 641 and attempt to make the turn, a right turn onto 233. And if bystanders hadn't yelled, they would have hit the building on that corner. So I, I would propose that it apply to any turns at that intersection, because I think the signage applies in all four directions.
I've actually included a provision that says any turn from the borough, within the borough limits onto 233 by a truck can be cited as, as an illegal turn. Because I'm not sure where in the borough trucks could reasonably go. Well, I guess there are some trucks that are able to legally turn onto 233 within the borough.
Yeah. And, and then there, there are also, what about the trucks turning from 233 onto 641 going toward the turnpike? That's also illegal.
We'll make that change.
Asking the police officers themselves to look at the ordinance and see if they have any suggestions.
Yeah, that's, I was, I was gonna ask, Chief, can you, can you stew over this for the next week too? And bounce off your thoughts?
Yes.
I mean, I, I like the idea of, you know, the civil side of this. But I, I thought I remembered too somewhere, Chief, you saying, or maybe it was the mayor, saying something along the lines of if it was a general statement, it could be applied to, to any kind of, you know, property damage. Not just there at the pole. Like, like what do we do if, if, you know, a, a truck turns down West Street? And, you know, trucks aren't allowed on West Street, and they do damage there to, you know? Do we want it so, so specific to just that, or do we want to broaden it a little bit?
Yeah, I thought we were going to include that in our, whatever we have to do there whenever we get our traffic study back. It was going to be part of that.
Right.
I can make it broader. Any illegal turn by a truck within the borough limits?
That's, I do see one thing
That covers any future.
I do see one thing here that sticks out pretty broad to me that we definitely got to look at is the, is the use of the word deliberately. It's in here three times. I don't want to have to argue intent.
Okay.
So it would be attempt or complete a turn.
Okay. We'll change that.
Reaction is going to bring a reaction. So if they can't come in and turn from, let's say, 233 to 641, what have you, then they're going to try to go through West Peak Spring Avenue and damage the fountain possibly, and then turn into West Street. So it's a good idea that we're broadening it to include anywhere in the borough.
Okay, so, so will, does anybody else have questions or comments?
I got a comment, Scott. Sunday, Monday morning about 12:30, 1 o'clock, I'm sure the chief can check his cameras. There was a truck sitting at the fountain that came up West Street, trying to make a left onto 233. And he's sitting there about five minutes trying to make that swing. So I don't know if it's on the cameras, but I know, got me out of bed. So I know they're still coming up West Street.
All right. So, so what we'll do is, you know, look over it over the next week. We'll bring it up again on Tuesday. So we'll table it until Tuesday, and we'll hopefully have something ready to, to advertise for the end of the month.
Does it catcher, does it capture the initial thought that we were trying to make something that would be applicable to the trucking companies that would get their attention? Does it do that much?
I think it does, yes. Yep.
All right, I think so. I think it just needs tuned just a little bit.
Sure. Oh, that's, that was my first attempt after I got a little teed off about the whole issue. So, so, you know.
All right, sounds good. Anything else, Mr. McKnight?
I'm concerned about this, and we address the safety aspects of it in a little broader terms. What if a civilian gets hit when the truck does that turn?
Oh, they'll have, they'll have lots of issues with that, but, but restitution can include injuries to, to, to personnel.
That's good, good to hear.
Okay. Anything else, Marcus?
No, that's, that's it. I was happy to see the, the letter from the IRS for the EDM. The letter from the IRS for the EDA. That was nice.
Very good.
That's great.
All right. Uh, Borough Manager, Mr. Potzer.
Hey, during the past month, I've had uh two lengthy phone calls with Eric Knar and regarding the trucks turning at the traffic light. And Pendot is recommending that the borough add the term restriction warning signs. To the traffic holes at the intersections. They will allow the borough to do this through a traffic signal permit amendment. And uh, council will need to authorize Martin and Martin to prepare that amendment. Uh, Mr. Knar said as soon as Pendot receives it, they will expedite the approval. And get us permission to post the additional warning signs. He is also going to set up a uh meeting with West Pensboro, North Newton, and the A Turnpike Commission. To discuss other signage uh in advance of the intersections in the townships. And we also discussed the sign that is at the intersection of Route six forty-one and six ninety-six. In uh, uh Newburgh Borough. This sign states that trucks should use Route six forty-one to Interstate eighty-one, and that's one of the reasons that we're seeing so many trucks. Getting off the Blue Mountain Interchange and coming east. Into Newville. And so Pendot's going to address that sign. Uh, they're either either going to modify or remove it. Uh, we had an accident at the park on April twentieth. Uh, police department investigated, our insurance companies opened a claim. And General Record is in the process of getting an estimate to the borough uh for the repairs to the. Uh. Guardrail. The community aid dumpsters continue to be a problem in the borough. Uh, both Ryan Street and the Zion Church Lot. We have been cleaning up those areas. Uh, we recently applied to Pendot for municipal waste poller placards for our two dump trucks. Uh, this will ensure that we can legally haul into any consummating landfill. So we will be getting uh getting those hopefully within the next week. And we will resume hauling uh three items up to the landfill. In the meantime, we are taking uh items uh to our dumpster at the maintenance building. Uh, North Corporation Street, CDV G project. Rejected bids last month. We uh, this week reissued the bids. Uh, the scope of the project was amended somewhat. Bids will open on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, council may be in a position to award on June first. Uh, the latest cost estimate of our engineer uh calls for a project of about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. I say to all the notice last week that I had met with representatives of the USDA, and we have been successful. Uh, in being qualified to apply for funds. For the new municipal building. This will include the communications, the telephones, IT generator, all those contracts. One through five. Uh, we will be eligible for grant low interest loan money through USDA. And I did uh. Talked to another company. Uh, regarding the generator and the price that they gave is much less. Uh, we're now looking at a generator in the price range of a hundred, or I'm sorry, forty-one thousand dollars. So it's about a. Thirty thousand dollar cost savings. Uh, we also had a meeting last week at the park on April twenty-second with Steve Hemler. Regarding the splash pad. And representatives of the Recreation Commission there. Uh, were in attendance. We're looking at expanding the canopy. Making the canopy area larger and a patio area with two steel benches. The two steel benches will be purchased. By the U.S. Marine Corps Detachment of Carlisle. And they will be purchased and they will have uh signs. Affixed to them in memory of Bob Gilbert and in honor of Jerry Gilbert. Uh, Jerry Gilbert was a former council president. Who uh was very instrumental in having. That splash pad instructed with Dick Copenhagen and his brother Bob. BPW is working on um a number of projects today. They. Uh, addressed the tree pits all around town. Alpha Space Control was in last night. They painted crosswalks at the traffic light and on Gleave Avenue, and that concludes their work. Uh, Capitol paving. Will be in this week to pave uh some sections of Big Spring Ave and Church Alley. And in addition, once they are done, Alpha Space will come back in and paint the yellow lines. And edge lines on Big Spring Ave. That's all.
Any questions for Fred? Okay, uh, Mr. Crouch, Western Cog.
He had the minutes in your packet. A couple of highlights, uh, Barbara Diamond gave an uh. Economic update. The state is currently projecting a three billion dollar loss. Uh. She also talked about the the proposal from Pendot to put up toll lanes on interstate bridges. And she is opposing that. Uh. She did also mention that and encouraged municipalities to have residents reach out to her office if they need uh help getting rent rent assistance. Uh, Jean uh. Foshee from the uh the Cumberland County Commissioner. Uh, talked about a couple of things that what uh was the most interest to me was that she said there is no agreement for sale on Claremont Nursing Home, and the commissioners have not voted on the issue. If the county maintains ownership of nursing home, they'll have to uh. Be a subsidy to the general fund because they need to make capital improvements at the facility and uh. They'd be looking at wage increases for the employees. So she would like the county to do a study to to try to determine if they. Retain the nursing home for the next ten years, what the impact would be on on taxes. Um. Couple of other things, uh. I believe it was Dickinson or Lower Frankfurt. Which one was it? There's. One of the townships uh mentioned that they are discontinuing recycling uh collection because it's uh. It's not getting recycled anyway, and it's it's additional cost. Um, interestingly, a note about that, there's even at where I work, we have a dumpster that is dedicated for cardboard. Uh, collection. And when the garbage truck came in and emptied the trash dumpster the other day, he dumped both of them into the same container. So. Uh. It's recycling is uh seems to be a a general problem with that. It's not achieving the purpose of that the municipalities are paying for or companies for that matter.
That was Laura Frankfurt.
Yeah, Laura, uh, Laura Frankfurt. The. North Newton Township, Mike Gutschall mentioned that the A.B. Martin is wants to build a one hundred thousand square foot building. Across the street from where they are. So that's they're looking at. At that, so planning a meeting. To discuss that, so. Those are just a couple of highlights that. Uh, I thought were of interest to to the borough.
Any questions for Mr. Crouch? Okay, Mr. Darius, public safety.
Public safety is a broad issue, and some of the things that we're doing now. For example, the truckers turning from six forty-one into two thirty-three and vice versa. These all improve public safety. And if uh it would include someone getting harmed or hurt. By making the turns or going too fast, that's all improvements in public safety. The sidewalk issue, I think, can be dealt with incrementally. If we decide to do so many streets at a time. In the long term, I think that would also turn the corner. Another thing is uh smoke detectors. At one time. Several years ago, the fire department had offered smoke detectors to people who couldn't afford it. Or didn't have it. I don't know whether that could be resurrected again because that would help. In terms of safety at the the home level for people. And carbon monoxide also the same way, whether or not. They're active and whether they have the batteries that are operating or what have you. So it's public safety is sort of a broad issue. A lot of things that. We're doing as a council are improving public safety. Whether we recognize it as such or not, but it's it's incremental improvements and they're very good. I think we're doing a great job in in a number of these areas. Which would improve public safety.
Any question? Uh, there's a, there's something on the agenda here for to review and discuss the proposal of Martin and Martin incorporate repair traffic studies of the borough. Streets and uh in order to enact the local delivery restrictions.
Well, that would, that would also improve. That would have an impact on public safety, definitely. Any comments on it, probably?
I think we need, I think we need action on it. We need a motion. So that. That proposal is in. Is in your packet. Um, it's toward the back. For five thousand five hundred and eighty-five uh dollars. And.
Make a motion. That's what you need.
So the motion would be to approve. Or or to um hire Martin and Martin to conduct a um. Traffic study of borough streets. In the amount of five thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, Fred, would this be general fund? Yeah, in order to act enact the local. Um. Delivery restrictions.
Our funds.
Fred, would that be general fund?
Um, how many streets do we get done for the five thousand?
All of everyone.
All of them?
Everyone that we requested.
Okay.
So I believe just so that we we know what they are. It's it's in the letter. Um, it's West Street, Corporation Street, Big Spring Avenue, Springfield Avenue, Parsley Street, Cherry Street, Washington Street. And Broad Street. Okay.
Well, I make them, we make that money available for them if the money is is there.
Okay, so Mr. Darius has moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Mr. Darius?
No, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Darius? Any questions for Mr. Darius?
No.
Okay, Mr. Erickson, Economic Development Authority.
Thanks, Scott. Um. So the materials from the last EDA meeting are in your packet. Um, and I can answer any questions you might have, uh, but some highlights. First, I'd like to start off by emphasizing what Marcus Marcus very quietly announced. Um. Which was, which is probably the biggest thing that's happened this month for in the uh economic development front, which is that IRS has granted the. Our five oh one C three status, which really allows the EDA. To begin soliciting for operational funds on a large scale. Um, we have a list or Chris has a list of uh. Uh, of key potential donors, um, large corporations and others, and uh. We're now free to uh to start moving on that. So Marcus, congratulations on a job well done. Uh, should get more recognition for that.
Um, thank you.
On the. Welcome. Um, on the EDA uh meeting highlights, um. The project manager's report is uh in there. Um. Chris focused to a large degree on the bright blighted property list. Uh, for board review. Uh, we have identified four, I believe, uh, at this point, properties. Uh, that could be subject uh to um. Being identified as blight and gone through the process and then condemned and used for parking. Um, or re- redeveloped for parking. Uh, which we desperately need if we're going to be able to bring small businesses into town. Um, the vote did not pass. For a variety of reasons, uh, mostly abstentions. Um, so um, I think that's something we may have discussed later tonight. Um. On the um. Prospect Hosting Committee, um. Uh, if you look at the minutes, there's a fairly detailed discussion of um. What went on this month, but just, you know, quickly, there are three or four small businesses. That have expressed an interest uh in in finding a location here. Um. We've been working with them, Fred, Valerie Copenhagen, myself. Uh, to help them find locations. Um. Two of them are micro breweries. Um, one of them is a um potential nutrition shop. Um. There's also a potential restaurant possibility, but these are all things that have kind of um. Uh, started to come to fruition in the last month or so. Um. And uh. Uh, we're, you know, uh, we're working on that. Um, today, there was a. A meeting uh that Valerie put together and I attended um. With the folks at Ship Daddy. And and one of the micro brewery owners uh who's looking for space. Uh, it's clear that the Ship Daddy folks are interested in doing something with them, something collaborative. Um. You know, they have an enormous space there. Uh, they don't have. Uh, a use for all of it, but they're paying for all of it. Um, and I think they're looking for, you know, to bring some um potential vendors in who could help to um. Share some of the uh the costs of operation of the building. Um, so that I think they're pretty open on this. Um, and the uh. The gentleman that talked with them today was uh. Uh, open, but you know, there are, there are questions and he'll be getting back to them and us, but it's uh, you know, there's an attempt here to try to see if we can leverage. Um, our relationship with Ship Daddy and some new businesses because it's a perfect location for a lot of things. Um. Let's see. Oh, the other thing from the PHC meeting was um. Uh, the uh small business property inventory has expanded. If you recall, the last time we talked, uh. We did not have much of an inventory, and that was holding up our ability to go out and uh find small businesses because we had no place to put them. Um. Andrea, the board chair, talked to Vince Malat and Ed uh about taking a lead on helping to identify um and um. And uh, check out um potential properties. Um, and in the last several weeks, they've come up with a list of roughly ten. Properties that uh would be suitable. Um, and so that. Sort of opens up the avenue now for us to do some more aggressive um. Hunting. Uh, we have, you know, we have a few, three or four organizations, entrepreneurs who are interested. In um opening a small business. Now we have some places we can show them. Um. So those are going to be going on the website, uh, and will be updated on a regular basis, but uh we can thank both Vince and and Ed for uh. Uh, for the forward momentum on that. Um. Let's see, on the um. Strategy discussion at the meeting uh today or around this week, last week, I'm sorry. Um. Chris focused on a few things. One is developing diversified funding base. Uh, operating base for the EDA. Um, it's uh, that's a priority for. Uh, the board members and the chair to be able to stand on its own bottom at some point soon. Um, Chris talked about the fact that we're getting closer to. Uh, being able to meet the qualifications for doing the feasibility study for four West. Uh, which could turn out to be a source uh of a stream of money over time for the EDA. Um, and that and the five oh one C three, as I said earlier. Uh, is is a major development in terms of being able to find um. Operating money, uh, and I will be able to, you know, move quickly forward on that now. Um, second thing you talked about was uh. Uh, with the board was a list of short-term projects for board engagement. You know, how can we do some? Uh, quick hits that will make a difference for the borough. Uh, and the board members um sort of focused on expanding the federal historic district. Um. If you have a property in a federal historic district, uh, you can get a twenty-five percent tax credit for any renovations uh that you make, uh, that qualify. Um, so there was a. Sense that we ought to focus on doing that. Um. That was talked about, I think, by the zoning review task force recently, and I think they're supportive of that idea. So it's, it's one of the ideas that the um. Uh, the EDA is going to be starting, start moving forward on. And then the third thing was the board orientation. Um, you know, the members of the board are all professionals, um, and they have relevant experience, but none of them know too much about economic development. Uh, and they were saying this is pretty complicated stuff, and they'd like some additional training and some of the basics and essentials. Um. So Chris is going to put together a sort of a um program. Uh, to help them to do that, because it's uh, and I I feel the same way. It's a very complicated. Uh, set of issues, um, and it will help them to do their jobs better. So those, those were the things that got talked about by way of strategy at the meeting. Um. And then, let's see, uh, are you going to talk about the train museum later?
Yeah, we'll try, yeah. Yeah.
I'll let that go. Uh, and then um. The last thing I had was uh the liquor license statement. We had talked about putting out a um. Uh, a statement in support of the liquor license, and I just uh. I I think at the last meeting, we had talked about drafting something. I just wanted to get a sense of uh. Of where that is and um, you know, what we want to do about that. Just want to open that for discussion a little bit.
Yeah, I'll I'll take responsibility for that. I dropped the ball. I told Fred I'd work with him on that and. Life happened and so I didn't get that far. To be quite honest, I think the EDAs is a pretty good one. And it does mention in there about the Newville Borough Council and that kind of stuff. So I think we can. I think we can take much of what's there, if not everything. And, you know, if people ask for it. I guess there's there's my opinion. There's there's two angles we need to look at with this, you know, there's a little bit of education needs to happen. In regards to, you know, like how much money leaves the borough. That kind of stuff. I think we can do that mostly through social media and the website. The others, the other part of that is, you know, there needs to be, there needs to be. Discussions, you know, people need just have. Frank conversations with each other. If if so, if you see your neighbor out, it might be a discussion. But the biggest thing is to get out the vote and make sure people make sure people vote because, you know, they. They could have signed that petition, but if them show up on May eighteenth. You know, it won't matter. So. I think Fred, we've we've discussed the. This issue in the past about independent voters. And my I I think I just heard. That independent voters will be allowed to vote in the primary based on the referendum question. So my question is, will will they be able to vote on? The liquor question? So that that might be me given the. Maybe I can give the. The county's, you know, election bureau phone call real quick. To make sure that they are because that's something that should be communicated as well because I think there's a misunderstanding. That it's a primary, so independents don't normally vote in a primary. But my understanding with this, because there's three or referendum questions statewide. My question will be, would this one be included for those independents to vote on?
Yeah, that would be an important thing to know. I just sort of assumed. That. Whatever your party registration, you'd be able to vote on this because it's not a partisan issue. It's you're not trying to nominate somebody to run on a party line of some sort, but I guess that's not clear. Is that right?
Well, Pennsylvania is kind of goofy when it comes to their letting independents vote in primaries. You know, usually it's not an issue because there's usually no other questions. On the ballot. It's usually just the primary for elections and that's it, but. This year, there seems to be quite quite a bit on the ballot outside of just the primary elections for for offices. But yeah.
I. I was part of a meeting in which the issue of the ballot questions statewide were discussed. And there was a deliberate effort to give the word out to independents that they can vote for those questions. I'm not sure how the county is going to do that, whether it's going to be a separate independent. Ballot with just the questions on, but. That would bear some. That should be checked out. So Scott, if you have any troubles checking it out, let me know and I'll. I'll contact my sources.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll give I'll give the folks at the County Election Bureau a call and they're usually pretty good about answering that question. So.
I guess so. Just, you know, a general question is, is there anything else we need to do? I know we want to keep a balance here, you know, it's. This is a sensitive question in some quarters. And we don't want to overwhelm people or. Energize people who think it's a bad idea. I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, is there anything else we should be doing besides just clarifying this and getting a statement out or does that? Do we all feel that that's sufficient for this for our purposes here?
Jack, I got I got a question that's been asked to me by a few people here in Big Spring Avenue and through town. To we use the word liquor license and people assume we're going to have. Whiskey and bourbon and. The hard liquor and I keep on trying to say no, but I it's not in writing anywhere. Of what this liquor license is going to allow us to do as a borough and and also. Once we get this established, if it is passed, how many establishments are going to be allowed in this town? That's another thing. I don't think we have any limits as to. What or how many different places can open up business? That's that's a concern also.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it is going to open it.
So to answer the first question. Well, I mean, to answer the first question, in order for somebody to to. To serve like hard alcohol or whiskey and that kind of stuff. They would have to purchase one of the county license. I think, Mr. Mayor, you probably know how much the last one went for somewhere around five hundred thousand to close to a million dollars.
Yeah, half a million. And right now, there are no. Liquor licenses. Which you would normally associate. With a high end restaurant or or bar available in Cumberland County. They're all sold. So it's. Think the confusion might come from. Is there something in the petition, Marcus, that that referenced distilled? Liquors because there are some micro breweries that do that. That not only make beer. They they distill spirits also. This type of license, what we're talking about might cover that. But as far as as far as. A full blown. Bar or or large restaurant with a liquor. It's not going to happen because it's not available.
Well, I think that's the best answer to give people. The cost is prohibitive for a town like Newville. Now, if we were getting a casino, I'm sure they'd have a hard liquor license. But otherwise, there's there's no chance of having. Because we just don't have the number of people who would need to support something like that available. No, this is this is designed to. To encourage the smaller. Businesses that would be micro breweries or something else that's. Designed to be selling food along with the beverage.
So how many? How many establishments will we allow to to have those licenses? There could be one in every block you let it go.
So. So that that is up to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. They do have certain restrictions, like it can only be, they have to be so many feet from a from a church or from. From an educational center, those kinds of things. But the other side, the other side. And so that's that's where, you know, the borough still would maintain a lot of their their power to, you know, control that. Yeah, there's just not real clear.
Yeah, I think that's the basic question here is. You know, here's two good questions that Ed's raised. We had sort of answers for them, but I guess the question is, do you go out and push those answers to people? Or you just use those answers when people raise it with you? I mean, how big? You know, how how big an education campaign do you do? And at what point do you? Get people interested who wouldn't normally be interested on the wrong side of this?
Would Valley Times be interested in covering that aspect of it?
Well, they might. Well, they might, but that's a that's a good case in point. Like, do you really want a story in the Valley Times Star? About this?
If we want to inform people, that's one way to do it.
I think I think maybe maybe the the middle happy ground. And this is just me thinking out loud here is, you know, we go ahead, we publish the statement. You know. That we've talked about. And in that statement, we say, you know, if you have any questions or concerns, please contact. I'm gonna have to mute folks because I can't hear. But it's going to be, you know, please contact the Borough Council member. And we'll do our best to get you the answers. All right. So just so you know, I muted everybody because we were getting a ton of feedback. So if you if you need to talk, please unmute and then mute yourself again.
But Scott, my question is, is. You say there is no liquor license available in the county, in the company county, which I understand. But you say that's up to Liquor Control Board to issue licenses, you know, how many they can issue.
For for restaurants and stuff like that. So there there are like, there are tons of different types of license. You can even get an agricultural. License to produce. That's that's what a lot of micro breweries use. They get it. They typically get an agricultural license and those are all controlled by the Liquor Control Board. You know, I think there's probably a good ten or twelve. That's one reason why I think we wanted to go with just the very generic. Question, because if we if we got in down into the weeds, it just got really confusing. You know, this is just a blanket generic. You know, they still have to go through the Liquor Control Board to get their license. What type of license they apply for is really up to them. And then they would still have to then come through, you know, our planning commission process and get a. Borough Council approval, just like any business would have to. Yeah. When coming into town.
Yeah, and I understand it. I guess I guess I'm looking at this, our whole thing as the Jack's program is, they're all part of a puzzle. To make this thing to make improve Newville and and the. Finances for New for Newville. And as a puzzle, all these little things are going to come together, which I think is great. Well, we just need some clarity. That's that's my concern.
I I believe. That the number of liquor licenses available. In each county are based on that county's population. And Cumberland County is maxed out. And I believe what we should make clear is what we're talking about. Is. An establishment like Kane's. If they have someone come in and sit down and eat a pizza to be able to serve them a beer or a glass of wine. Or Jamie Lee's or Brothers Pizza doing the same thing. Or a combination microbrew and restaurant type. Setup where we're not. You know, talking about the Walnut Bottom Tavern or or any anything like that. And I think if we make that clear. That. I I don't think that, you know, if there is any real opposition, I I think that will temper it somewhat.
I guess, Randy, and I'm not doing a prolongation, but you just said, talked about the Walnut Bottom Tavern. That's all verbal. We have nothing in writing. That's my concern. You know, what we're going to allow in this borough as far as numbers of businesses they're going to be able to serve or. You know, maybe just Scott said it's up to Liquor Control Board. I don't know. But that is concerned. For me, anyway.
And the reality is that we have two grounds to to control. One is through our zoning. The other is through. Involved, being involved in the process with Liquor Control Board. If if something popped up that we just thought was in a bad place or was was a bad idea for that neighborhood. We could have input, I think.
Yeah, these were these were some good questions. I think Scott's approach to this makes sense, you know, that generic statement out. And then. Say, if you have questions or comments, contact someone from the Borough Council, but I also think that means. We probably not need to write down some answers to this to these questions. We, you know, we've raised four or five questions here. And we, you know, loosely talked about answers, but we probably should have those because somebody may get a call.
Yeah, yeah. I had that in calls, so I couldn't answer it. So.
Yeah, yeah. So if we if we can put something together like that, I think it might help. You know, at the same time.
I think I think a lot of people that did the petitioning and I think those talking points are pretty. Pretty good. But I can expand on those.
I think it's just these specific questions that, you know, just got raised here. That we just need to have answers for. I think that would and and not and I. I think we probably don't want to raise the profile of this too high. I mean, we did get a lot of. Votes on on that petition, twice what we needed, right? Roughly. And. So that's a good sign. I don't see that, you know, we should be alarmed about what we're looking at. It's just. You never know what you don't know. And if we had some simple answers to some common sense questions that have been raised here, it might help to quiet some people's fear. And this is this is an important issue, you know, if if this liquor license goes down, all the people we're talking to right now, we're dead. They're gone. They're all they're all they're all talking to us on the assumption that there will be a liquor license and they're, you know, brew microbreweries, restaurants. Entertainment places with some food. It's not bars that we're talking to. It's people that just want to give people a nice place to go out and have a something to eat and a drink. But they will not. Come to a place that where they can't sell alcohol. So there's a lot on the line here.
Yep. Okay. I'll I'll work on that that document. There's talking points and I promise that I will have them before the end of the week.
Okay, if you need help, let me know.
And I'll give I'll give the Election Bureau a call as well.
Great.
Okay. All right. Any question? Anything else for Jack? Okay, Recreation Committee, Mr. Sigovitz.
Yes, he's got you're breaking up. Is there, you know?
It's it's you. You're on. You're on.
Okay, okay. Well, I got a full page here. I don't know if everybody got a copy of the dates we have coming up for the park. There's a have it broken down. Fred has broken down two sections. The first part is rides that we're going to have June twenty-second through August nineteenth. Including a a dance, a teen dance, actually be two teen dances at the park. So it's going to be seven events and I just got a total cost of twenty-three seventy-five as of now. What it's going to cost to have our our one of our park picnics or I'm sorry, entertainments. And the following events are going to be with Dylan Strauss. So we broke it down into two different. Areas for cost and these his his time with the park in first part is going to be all intertwined. But as of now, his cost will be sixteen seventy-five. For bringing his rides and having be a DJ for us. So again, I don't know if everybody's got a copy of what's going to take place, the dates, but I can read that if anybody wants to. I can. Sure Fred can issue that to us. To you, but I just want to break down what the costs are going to be. Go ahead, Scott, I'm sorry.
I I think Fred said that that was twenty-three seventy-five for.
Yeah.
Dylan.
Yeah. Yes, no, Dylan sixteen seventy-five, what I what I got.
And I think Fred has that.
Yeah, he does. I apologize. It is twenty-three seventy-five for Dylan and sixteen seventy-five for the second portion. Sorry about that. So we have days, maybe we want to they have a a full full slate here up through up through August. So. And then also we have offensive that suffices as far as information is to dates you're going to have, what we're going to have. We're going to fund it, faith and funding of parks sponsored by several local churches. Under the leadership of Pastor Fowler, and that's going to be Fridays. June day, starting June eighteenth through August thirteenth from ten AM to twelve noon. And those lunches will be provided by various churches within the in the borough. Or or part of the church. So that's that's pretty much going to be taken care of by him and his pastors. We spoke about park improvements. I think we talked about this before and we were trying to get a scoreboard in place. And we met with the man from OES scoreboards at Frederick, Maryland. It was Kevin Yost, Pastor Fowler, myself. And he came up and he brought three different prices for scoreboards. We took the middle cost for thirty-three twenty and I think Scott, it's interesting, you're working with him at the big at the high school. Yeah. So he has quite a bit of brought came here with quite a bit of contacts we can make for the scoreboard. Nice thing about it is that's on the. All hand controlled at the dugouts. We not not be any wiring. It's going to be very operated. It's going to be thirty-three. It's going to be $33.20. It's and I have pictures. If anybody wants to see the pictures, and maybe Fred has sent them out to somebody. But the biggest thing here is going to be installation and this $33.20 for is just for this cost of the sign. So we're going to have to come up with a next meeting with the cost of installation. We feel like we can buy our own materials here and have it installed locally if we can. If we, if they do, it's going to be much more expensive. I think it's another $4,000 or $5,000. Correct, Fred? I believe that's what it is. But we can save that money by trying to do it ourselves. Go ahead, Fred, I'm sorry.
He, he just said yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, I just didn't want to go ahead of him. But that's pretty much, we're kind of excited about this, the scoreboard. We want to win for a long time. So this is a good, this is really a lower price than we initially were looking at last year and beginning of this year. But again, that $33.20 is just for the price of the scoreboard and not the installation. So we'd have to buy the materials here, the steel and different things for the installation of it. But it is radio controlled from size of cellphone will be the controller. So we're, we're looking to do that. Another portion of the, our committee was the Trailhead. The Recreation Committee recommends obtaining a proposal from Hoover's Plumbing and Heating to try to install a water fill, a water bottle fill station at the Trailhead. To pay for by the rec commission from profits of vending machine sales. The, we were initially asked by Rails and Trails to install that here. And just through our discussions and stuff, we feel like we'd rather take and do it here locally and take responsibility for it. And Fred came up with the idea about profits from the vending machines that we can control it. I just think it'd be, be better for everybody if we do it ourselves and not get the trail involved with it. So I think we were in general consensus with that, with everybody who was at the meeting agreed to that. This coming, our first Saturday of May, which would be just Saturday, we're having our, through the Quanis Club, we're having a fun day of fishing, without fishing. We're going to meet at the park from nine to 12, this or 10, I'm sorry, 12, 10 to 12 is coming Saturday. And we have them placing now about 40 fishing rods to hand out to kids. We bought quite a few new ones. We have some used ones. Fred donated some money for, we're going to have a little pond, a fake pond, just to hand out some different gifts and coupons to people that don't want fishing rods. But we're still asking for anybody has used fishing rods. It don't, they don't use them anymore. We can use more. We have 40 right now. But so this is our, but everything we have is new. So it's going to be a nice day. We're going to hot dogs, which will be taken care of by the Quanis Club. So we've, we've underwritten everything, spent $800 a day for new rods and stuff for, for the, for the today. So we're looking forward to a good day, but again, I could use some more fishing rods if anybody has or you're not using. Just let me know and put them on my front porch and I'll gladly take care of them. And Fred, just so you know, everything else we got today is down in the, on the concession stand in the park. It's locked up down there. I got the key from Jody. So they're all locked in there. And I told Dave Henshaw about it also. That's pretty, yeah, that's pretty much all I have. But it's, we got a busy summer at the park. And I don't know if anybody's at the park this past weekend. And he had a Little League tournament there. I would tell you, anybody, we should have, we have something to be proud of as a park in this little town for, for what the few amount of people we have compared to these bigger cities. But I don't have a nicer softball park or complex that we have in this area than what we have. So I'm really proud of that and hope everybody else is also.
Any questions, any questions for Fred or Ed? We're, we probably have a couple of motions here that we need to take care of.
Yes.
I'm writing them down here real quick. All right. So the first one would be a motion to a motion to approve the proposal from Strauss Entertainment in the amount of $23.75. And this would be pending his certificate of insurance.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. The next one is a motion to approve funds of $1,675 to the other vendors for summer recreational programming. And those funds would come from the Newville Area Events Fund.
Yes.
Do we have a motion for that?
It'll move.
It's been moved. Do we have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, say no. Motion, any extensions? Motion carries. Fred, do we need to shut down streets for the last Friday concerts? Should we just go ahead and do that right now? All right. So we're going to need a motion to close streets. And that would be Big Spring Ave. From High to Liberty.
West Street from Parsonage to
West Street from Parsonage to Glebe. Okay. And that would be, that would be for our, our five last Friday concerts. And I would say shut them down at five o'clock. Five to 10:00 in the evenings. Okay. So you have a motion before you?
You made the motion.
No, no, somebody else can make it. Okay, it's been moved. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Jody, I just, I, I think everybody's up to date on this, but Jody, we're, we're fully booked for all five months. And I, I think you were starting to work on, on food wagons, if I'm correct.
Yes, yes, I am. Do you know if the Reif Snyder's still have their truck or not? Because I can't find any information on it anymore.
I, I will text him tonight and I will let, I will let you know. The last time I talked to him, I never got a straight answer about it.
Okay.
But that was all, that was all at the beginning of COVID and I think some of that was, was uncertainty as to where things were going to go. Okay, Wheelhouse in Shippensburg, Jody?
Yes, they're on my list.
Okay, so they have one. Yeah. Okay. And, you know, like we said, the bands are all lined up. May is the High School Chorus and Choirs. June is Vintage Crew. July is Midlife Crisis. And August is the JCM Band. And then in September is the Shippensburg Swing Band.
Correct.
I think all of them start at 6:30 except for the, the first and the last one because it's going to get darker. So.
No, no, we, we changed that at the rec meeting because the other bands, I'm not sure about Midlife Crisis, but the other ones preferred six to eight also.
Also, everybody wants six to eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just to get rid of confusion.
All right, makes sense. I understand that. It solves the, solves the sunset problem for, you know, any, anything in June or August too, so.
Yes.
Good. Jody, do you have Winger Meats and Ice on your truck list?
Do I have who?
Winger, Winger Meats and Ice?
No, I don't.
I think they have a food truck.
Yep.
I know they do events and they're good. They're a good quality.
And obviously, 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 when we advertise this, you know, we want to encourage people to support our local businesses too. So, you know, come in, grab a pizza or whatever, you know, pop down to Jamie Lee's if she's open. Hopefully her ice cream window will, will be very busy that night and yeah, okay, and Tess is working on flyers too. I know she has, she has some social media stuff ready to go. So it should be good. It'd be.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Ed?
What about this sign, the scoreboard? Do you think you can vote now, tonight, or just hold off?
Yeah, we, we can't do anything with that until we get the grant fund. So why don't we just hold off until we get them? Hopefully, within the next 30 days, I think.
Okay, and what about the fill station at the Trailhead?
I don't have a price.
We don't have, we need to get a price for that.
Okay, we'll hold off on that then. Okay, the last thing I have is, is we wanted to, we were taking the past, talking about putting a train, a museum down here at the Trailhead in conjunction with one they have in Shippensburg or something like that. So that's just in the starting phases right now. I think there's four or five people volunteered to be on the committee, just to look at that, just to start it, to see what we can do, what the potential is. Be a long way off, but we got to start somewhere. So Jack asked me if I would kind of take over and just try to guide this thing, see where we can go with it. And I'll be glad to do it. We have no dates, no prices, nothing yet, just to starting, to start up things. So we're just forming a committee, trying to form a committee now. I have to get with Jack and that. He has some names, not many names. So maybe Fred has some too, but just like to get that started and I like to broke the front of what we're doing here, just so if we are going to do it or not, should be good potential.
Yeah, that's great, Ed. Thank you. And yeah, Fred and I, Fred has some names. I got a name too. Why don't we talk offline tomorrow?
Yeah.
About, you know, I'll shoot, we can share the names and we can talk about the first meeting.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
That sound good, Fred? Okay. All right, anything else, Ed?
No, that's it. Got a full summer coming.
Yes, we do. Sounds good.
Yep, we're busy.
Any other questions, Fred? All right, very good. Miss Steel, Quality of Life.
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, I do want to thank the Newville Police Department for doing some extra patrols down around Zions Parking Lot and the Community Aid Dumpster. I was told that my people in the General Recreation that they noticed that you were, your, your department was doing some patrolling there. So I do really, you know, appreciate that. We really hate to lose that community aid bin because it does help, you know, fund things that we, that our church does for the community. And so anything that we can do to keep that, I really truly appreciate it. Um, the other thing is the car show. It is set for September the 18th and we're going to start early in the morning and probably go to about two o'clock or so. We're going to have the Boy Scouts, hopefully, do their breakfast sandwiches. And then at lunch, do their hot dogs and hot sausages. We're also looking for somebody to maybe do water and soda. We're thinking that the VFW is going to do a chicken barbecue. And I'm going to talk with Kathy Graver at the Senior Center to see if they would be interested in doing pie and ice cream. The other thing is, we had a raffle two years ago and found out that we really should have had a license to do that raffle. So we decided we wanted to try and do another raffle, but this raffle is going to be gift certificates for Sailor's Market. We're not going to do firearms or anything like that. So I was, met with Fred and Fred got me some information from the County Treasurer's Department because that's where these small gains of chance license come from. And we found out that we needed to have a tax exempt number for that. So the mayor happened to come in, who is the head of the beautification committee, and he graciously said that they would sponsor us so that we could use their tax exempt or their nonprofit status. And we can get a license that will run for a whole year for $125. And I think we kind of decided that's what we wanted to do because then we can have other, you know, fundraisers throughout that year. The one stipulation is though that we have to have one central location. And obviously with the car show being at the park, the park's going to be the the area in which we will do these other fundraisers. Um, let's see, what else do I have here about that? It has a lot of paperwork to do that. So I'm hoping that I can get some help either from Fred or, or from Randy to help me fill that out. But it's going to benefit the whole community because, you know, beautification can use it and Newville Area Events, you know, will also be able to use that license. And we are going to get Vintage Crew is going to play for us that Saturday. We're going to get a young singer to do the Star Spangled Banner again. We're going to have, you know, some other vendors that want to set up. I know, I think the VFW Ladies Auxiliary here in Newville, you know, is going to have a stand. They're trying to increase their treasury sum. So I think they're looking to sell some candles. It's just going to be another, you know, really nice day. Hopefully, we're going to have beautiful weather. And anybody that would like to volunteer to help that day, we would certainly welcome the help. And then my final thing is, as Jack mentioned the other night at the EDA meeting about the bladed properties. And they tried to get a motion to go through so that they could act upon, you know, some of the bladed properties. And that motion did not go through because, first of all, they didn't yeah, it just, you know, there's too many, there were businessmen on there and, you know, they just had some questions. And there was a part of them that just didn't feel right about doing it. So I'm bringing it up to our council to vote to put these bladed properties on, on with the county so that we can get some funding for these, to purchase these properties. And the first one is one to three East Main Street, which is an LA's property. The other one is one or two Broad Street, which is Kim Heck and Born's. Then we have 19 East Main Street, which is Ann Kaiser's and 23 North Corporation Street, which is the Rich Wine. And I think in your package, you're going to see there are some pictures of those properties. So I think what we need to do is make a recommendation that the Borough Council puts these properties to the county for their inventory of bladed properties.
Joey, could I add a little context to that?
Yes, yes, you may.
The idea here and the reason for wanting to do this The idea here, and the reason for wanting to do this is primarily because we need to get some additional parking in town. One of the things that we've been told by, you know, small businesses who've come and looked and by survey work that we've done is that there's no parking here for small businesses, no off-street parking. So there's no parking for employees, there's no parking for people who wanna shop. And when we were doing the petition drive a few weeks ago, I was going door to door. And pretty much everybody I talked to wanted to talk more about the parking problem than talk about the liquor license. But it's, it's a critical thing, because if we don't get more off-street parking, we're just not gonna be able to attract businesses. So these are properties that have been in in deterioration for quite a long time. It doesn't necessarily, and Fred knows this better than I do, so I'm not gonna get into deep here and, and, you know, say things I don't understand very well. But it doesn't necessarily mean that these people lose their property. They can in fact come back in and fix them up. And that has happened in some cases. Some people just leave the property, because they don't have the money to fix it, or they don't wanna put the money into it at this point. But when, you know, there's an action forcing event like this, they decide it's worth doing. And so, you know, even if the property isn't taken over, because it's bladed and used for a purpose, we get a functioning property back in Newville. So that's some of the background, I think, just to flesh that out a little bit.
Thanks, Jack. So I guess what I'm looking for here is a motion that we add these four properties to send them off to the county to see if they will add them to their list. Is that correct, Fred? Is that, am I saying that right?
Well, once you send the list to the county, they will add these properties to their list. In two thousand nineteen, you sent a list. It included two of these properties, one to three Spain Street and one of two Broad Street were on that list with three other properties. Three of those other properties, one ended up being demolished. The other was renovated into a convenience store. And the other property was also fixed up and repaired. So it does not mean that every one of these properties is going to be demolished. All you're doing is certifying that these properties meet the requirements of blighted properties under the Pennsylvania state law. Nothing more. You're not acquiring these properties. You're not buying them, you're not knocking. All you're doing right now is sending a list to the Cumberland County Planning Commission, confirming these properties are blighted.
So, so it's, just so I understand, it sounds like we just need to add nineteen East Main and twenty-three North Corporation, that the other two are already on the list? So we just need to, just need to do those two?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so I think what we're looking for is the motion is to add nineteen East Main Street and twenty-three North Corporation Street to the to the, what's the official name of that? The Cumberland County Planning Commission's Bladed Properties List.
It's the Redevelopment Authority, isn't it?
No.
No, okay, sorry. See, I should shut up.
Okay? So that's, that's what we're looking for a motion for. Does somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved, is it seconded? Seconded? Did?
Seconded?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no? Was that a no? Mr. Darius? You're muted, so I, I can't, I don't know whether you said no or
Okay, is it unmuted now?
Yes, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Nineteen East Main Street is under consideration for sale.
Well, that, that, I wouldn't have any, that wouldn't have anything to do with this.
Well, what's the advantage of putting it on the list if it's being sold to be renovated?
Well, how do we know that? As I say, has it been sold and has it been renovated?
Well, the agreement to sell it has been signed. It's in attorney's hands.
Okay, so until it's renovated, it would remain on that list.
Right. And then once it's renovated, then it gets off the list?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. So I wanna recuse myself from that.
Okay, alright, so we have, we have all upset, all, all, all yeses, one abstentions, no nos. Okay?
Yes.
The motion carries. Alright. Anything else, Mrs. Deal?
No, not at this time.
Any questions for Mrs. Deal? Okay, Mr. Crouch, Administration Committee?
Have the adoption schedules, the new zoning ordinance in your packet? Need to just review that. We need to approve to advertise this schedule. So the, the schedule is, it's been worked, this provided here is worked out by Troy. It's obviously a month-long process. By the earliest, we'd be looking at actual approval of the, of the ordinance is at the end of August. So if, if we want things to be happening that quickly, we need to get the process started. So I would move that we advertise a block display ad in the Valley Times-Star for the, this schedule, so that people are aware of it. Costs to be about a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the block ad.
Okay, is that a motion? Okay, so yet, so Mr. Crouch has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay.
That's all for today. We just give a heads up that the work session, we're going to have representatives from Brown Brown to present the renewal of the insurance package. So that'll be coming up at our next meeting.
Okay, so, um, any questions for Mr. Crouch? Very good. Alright. Let me look to see if we have any citizen comments. Fred, did you have any citizen comments on your end?
None in the mailbox, none in the Dropbox, and none by email as of course.
And there are none on the YouTube, so we are good there. Correspondents?
We have a letter or request from Kathy Graver requesting permission to use the Newville Community Park or her Zumba suicide program. They hold this on Monday and Thursday mornings. It would be in the months of June through September.
So we need a motion to Zumba in the park?
Sounds good.
And that, what, they were June through September and what, what days was?
Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday and times?
Eight thirty till nine thirty.
AM or PM?
AM.
I guess that was a silly question, wasn't it?
Sorry.
And that was June through August?
September.
Or September and certificates needed. Alright, so let me reread this for you. Motion to approve Zumba in the park on Mondays and Thursdays from eight thirty to nine thirty AM for the months of June through September, pending a cert certificate of insurance. So there's the motion that we need. Does somebody wanna make that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay.
I don't know, Joey, Joey, Zumba After Dark has a ring to it.
Yeah, it does. But, you know, these are older folks, it's the Senior Center and, um, I, that's their bedtime.
Which one's that? Go ahead. I don't have a look.
Okay, next item is Cumberland County and Franklin County Boroughs Association have suspended their meetings for April on May. They will not resume meetings until September due to the COVID virus. And Newburgh Borough will host the meeting in September. There was a letter received, actually, it's a reading card, it's the Borough Council. Due to the indoor restrictions from past eight months, on Thursday mornings, a small group of women have been meeting at the gazebo, where they're permitting it. It's been a wonderful time and a place to stay connected with each other. Thank you for providing a lovely and unique venue. It has been the blessing for all. Sincerely, Norma Griffith on behalf of the Gazebo Ladies. And that was received.
That was nice.
Alright. It was nice. Okay, that's all. Anybody else? Okay, under, anything else under old business that you need to address? Anything under new business that you wanna address? Any need for executive session?
Scott, just a, a quick information for Fred. While the meeting was going on, I sent a text to Don Flagle. Joint Veterans Council had a meeting last Wednesday, this past Wednesday. He attends representing the VFW. He indicated nothing has been said at the last two meetings about the Hometown Hero banners. But on our behalf here, he, he did give Pat a call and just texted me that she said she just started working on them and have them, would have them ready by the end of the month, which frankly is only three days from now. But that, that's the latest from someone who, who has actually been at the last two meetings.
We want banners up that say we support our troops with the flag and symbols. So we will have banners up.
Okay. So, so either way, we will have banners up, one way or the other, okay?
What, Fred, what is it? If, if Pat were to come in with the, the photographs and all that, what is the timeframe to get those done?
It would be I don't know that you would have them in time for Memorial Day, because someone has to digitally send those photographs to Carrot Top. And sometimes the pictures have to be restored. And there are at least two proofs that come back that we have to review. It is a good thirty days banners printed and shipped here, up in time for Memorial.
Okay. Okay, anything else? I do have down that, we have Brush Collection next week. I believe that's Monday on the North Ward and Tuesday on the South Ward, is that right? Okay, so Monday on the North Ward, Tuesday on the South Ward, Brush Collection. We have a work session meeting on Tuesday, May fourth, at seven PM. You know, I, I plan on being here to, to do things the same way. So that's, it's up to you if you wanna zoom in. Either way, I'll, I'll send the links out, okay? Any other announcements? Anything else for the good of the order?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, go to sleep. Alright. Okay, have a great rest of the week, everybody.